I have two right hands when it comes to community outreach liaison. They both work with the clergy roundtable and with SAC in Health Neighborhood. And we have recognition, and I'll let them take over.
It is my privilege and honor to recognize someone that I met about a year ago when I came to work place among the SAC meeting. And it has been a joy working with him, learning with him, talking to him on our conference call that we quite often have, and discussing issues related to SAC. This man had contributed tremendously to our SAC area, also Service Area Four, and he's been with SAC for about five years. So I'd like for you guys to join me in recognizing and appreciating the work that character and her had done for SAC.
I wasn't expecting this, but thank you so much. This is my last act as SAC co-chair in Service Area Four. I've been here about five years, so it's time for me to move on, but not move away. So I will still be in Service Area Four, but I will make the SAC co-chair chair available for someone else at this time. Thank you guys so much, and I'll still be around. Thank you.
We also want to thank Reginald Alfond. He wasn't able to be here today. He's been our co-chair for quite some time as well, and we have a plaque for him. But again, he isn't here, but we want to thank him for all of his service. Last month was his last month as our co-chair, so thank you.
Now, one reason we wanted to do that herald, we wanted to serve and thank you. We had been an unwavering support for you when I came on in 2015 and took over SAC shortly after that for a representative of DMH, because let's be clear, the SAC belongs to the community, and I had always believed that. And you were there to assist me, and it has been a pleasure serving with you and Reggie. But one reason I wanted you to have an award is because I wanted you to come up and say that you would still be around, and we all heard it, and we're holding it to it. So thank you. Moving on, Service Area Four, we are a densely populated, very diverse community, and our staffing reflects that, and we're very proud of that. We represent, I believe at last count, over twenty different languages, and we have the most diverse population of consumers as well in LA County. We serve a residential area of just about two million folks, so we're out there and we're doing a lot, and we can't do it without you. I want to bring to the microphone the program managers for the directly operated programs for DMH. There are three main clinics and a total of thirteen programs: Hollywood Mental Health, Downtown Mental Health, and Northeast Mental Health. And they also have satellite programs associated with each. So I'd like to have them each come up and tell you a little bit about their programs, what they're doing that is exciting and innovative. This is a wonderful way to give a face to a name. Many folks that come to the SAC meeting, I'm there as the representative, because these are the folks that have boots on the ground, and each of their programs have their many challenges and requires a lot of their attention. So I represent for the department and am the bridge between the programs and SAC, but they're here to tell you about what they do and the staff that works for them. Okay, so let's do some more.
Well, hello. So by way of introduction, I'm Marcy Good, and I'm one of the program managers for Downtown Mental Health Center. Specifically, what I'm overseeing is our prevention and early intervention services, our talbert and growth services, employment-related mental health services, and a co-located, integrated care team. I am happy to be here. I thoroughly enjoy my assignment. One of the things that I really like is in our prevention and early intervention services, aside from the clinic-based services that we provide, we also do a lot of partnering in our Skid Row community. So we're in the SROs, running groups, running groups in shelter, seeking safety trauma-related group. We have staff out in LA County Public Library. We have staff who are at Union Rescue Mission once a week doing mental health screenings. So in addition to trying to extend ourselves to bring people into the clinic, we're also extending ourselves to the community and trying to provide services in the community and be as accessible as possible. We also tend to respond to community requests. So we've gone out and done presentations for different agencies in the community who asked us to come and assist them with education around mental health issues. We've gone into the community and put together workshops at their request. We were here at LHA tech doing mental health screenings. We went to a frequent occupational college to do a workshop for their faculty and their students. So we really like responding to those kind of requests. We actually did a team workshop last week at El Monte Library, we're out in Duarte Library, partnering with the city of Duarte and their homeless liaison to address homelessness in that community. So whenever people call upon us, we try to address the need, figure out what they think is our help with and be of help. So that for me is really exciting, not knowing, not having two days look alike, not knowing what plus will be there, but we really like being the challenge. So that's what I enjoy about our prevention and early intervention services. We're developing some new programs that I'm really excited about as well, so I'm going to come about that.
Hello, everybody. My name is Tasha Sweet, and I'm the program manager for Downtown Full Service Partnership Program and the Men's Community Reintegration Program, which is located in Skid Row. The Men's Community Reintegration Program is a fairly new program. We've been in existence and seeing clients for about two years, and our goal is to help reduce the recidivism rate of clients who have mental health and other psychosocial issues, basically keep them out of jail. And so we start working with clients while they're still involved in the justice system at the diversion level, and what we do is work very closely with courts to get orders or conditional releases. We work with clients while they're still in jail and developing reentry plans and then picking clients up and so that we don't lose them and continuing the work in the community with the client. One thing that's really cool about our program is that we stay connected with the court throughout the whole process, and if the client is able to commit, sorry, finish a year of treatment, many of them are able to have their sentences or their charges reduced or done away with, and so that's a real big motivator. We are an intensive level of care that's consistent with an FSP program, many elements, but one thing is that our clients are maybe not as acute of mental health concerns but have a lot of criminogenic issues. We utilize a lot of the up-and-coming evidence-based practice for forensic mental health populations, and we've been very fortunate enough to get specialized training so that we can do so. We are the only directly operated men's reentry, reintegration program in the county at this time. And so we recently graduated six guys from our program about a month and a half ago, and I will say that it's really, our guys come sometimes eight to ten hours per week of treatment, and their treatment can be groups, individual therapy. We have drumming, we do moral recognition therapy. So there's a lot of stuff that's going on in our clinic that we're really proud of, and we have a wonderful staff who really works hard to help our clients to move past their barriers and be able to successfully reintegrate into the community. Downtown FSP, we are actually co-located with the men's program, and I'm responsible for that as well. I'm very excited to say that we recently engaged in a pilot project with the Public Guardians Office where we are working very closely with clients who are conserved and really collaborating across, you know, the treatment with the public guardian, how we can leverage our resources and knowledge base for our treatment side as well as the conservatorship and the legal side. That's been going really well. We've had a lot of positive outcomes with our clients who initially, when they were just with the conservatorship, really not doing a whole lot, now they're being engaged into recovery-related activities, and we're actually seeing clients not just be okay, but be well. So that's really exciting. And then finally, the department has partnered with UCLA to build upon our FSP services, and we've been very fortunate enough to benefit from the training opportunities that have been afforded so that we can provide more effective care to more clients in our community. So that's what we've got going on.
Hi, good morning, everyone. I'm Jesus Romano, I'm the program manager at Hollywood Mental Health Center, and we have a wellness center and an FSP program attached to our clinic. Currently, we're a traditional outpatient clinic, so most of you might be familiar with what that is. It's, you come to us, we help you to show up, and hopefully we assign you the right therapist, case manager, psychiatrist, so forth. But right now, fortunately for us, in the Hollywood community, the coming year, there's going to be a culture shift, and it's going to affect not only LA County, but probably the country as a whole in terms of how we look at services for mentally ill folks. First of all, in May, at the Mental Health Services Oversight and Accountability Commission, Innovations Project was presented to them called Triestin. Many of you may have heard of that and had an opportunity to read the proposal. That is an Innovations, MHSA Innovations Project funded over five years for about $160 million. And what that's going to do is it's going to help us to look at clients in a holistic way, to provide mental health services and listen to personal stories. Unfortunately, that's something we don't always get to do right now in the traditional sense. It will mean a difference in the way we go about business. We'll look at mental health services as maybe auxiliary services. It's about entering the system at any point in the system. There's no wrong door to access services, and we look at the whole person, listen to their story, and make sure that they get the resources they need. What this means for Hollywood is that Hollywood is going to be the recipient of a lot of training and resources and services available to the clients that currently you don't find in the Hollywood community or in LA County for that matter in some cases. So we're really excited about that. So at the moment, what's going on in the Hollywood community is our clinics and our programs are all undergoing a cultural shift. We're starting to prepare for the coming of the new Triestin project in July of 2020, and we're slowly but surely training staff, having conversations about what it's going to look like, what does it mean for us, how can we, how can we engage the community in a meaningful way? So that's pretty much the gist of it. The proposal itself is pretty long and pretty dense and pretty ambitious, but I can assure you with Dr. Sharon at the helm and other folks in our service area, we're going to do great. So we're looking forward to it, we're excited. It's going to change our ability to really impact services and the lives of our consumers, our users. So thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Anthony Alvarado. I'm the program manager at Northeast Mental Health Center and the Northeast Wellness Center. I think just kind of continuing what Jesus and Marcy and Tasha are saying, I think really what we're talking about is expanding how we think of mental health recovery and kind of moving beyond just mental health and really just to overall wellbeing. And I think this is really the key, and I think we've been trying to accomplish that ourselves. We have tremendous, we benefit from having a tremendous amount of dedicated staff. We have several staff members who have lived experience, and I think they bring that to their work every day. Our Wellness Center has been incredibly fortunate to have staff that really care, willing to share who they are in support of clients, and I think it's helped build a culture there that has really emphasized creative expression, it's emphasized involvement, a sense of belonging. And I think that is kind of evidenced in the fact we've got about twenty-eight volunteers in our program, thirteen of which are wellness outreach workers, and these are people who are receiving a stipend from our department to provide peer-supported services. Over this last year, we've really spent a lot of time trying to engage them and get them into all aspects of our program, whether it's our full-service partnership team, our older adult field-based team, our Wellness Center, of course, their facilitating groups, you know, leading initiatives, and then also kind of in a new program that we've been trying to expand on. So similar, kind of like a focus on outcomes. You know, with the Transforming Clinical Practice Initiative, we really took advantage of the opportunity to focus on hemoglobin 81C and also the PHQ9, which, you know, is kind of a score for depression, to really kind of take a look at how people are doing, how they're functioning, how they're feeling, and not just focused on whether they come to see us or taking their medications or seeing their therapist, but really saying, is there a meaningful change in their life and what can we do to support it? And a lot of our clients are suffering from metabolic syndrome across, you know, our whole system, and so trying to address that, right, trying to track, you know, people that are at risk for diabetes or high body mass index and creating programs to support that. One of those is a program we created that kind of just focuses on kind of addressing the issues of health and mental health and the interplay between the two. We have some psychiatrists involved in that five-session group. We also have some clinicians, some peers involved too. It's really just focused on helping people to consider making a healthy lifestyle change. We've had a program, an OT occupational therapy intern program for the past five years. Now, we have an occupational therapist who's helped us kind of bring in interns throughout the whole summer for twelve weeks full-time. We have four of them, and they've been able to expand our programming. And one of the key groups that they've led is this group, that's a SAMSEC group called NUAR, and it's Nutrition, Exercise for Wellness and Recovery. And it's kind of there for people that are more in the taking action stage, they want to try to start cooking healthier meals, they want to kind of address the issues of nutrition and exercise. We've had our OT interns come, lead them to supermarkets, reading labels, giving them, you know, recipes that they can share. We are exploring partnership right now with Seeds of Hope. I think they've been in some of the churches throughout the community, through LA County, as well as the Wellness Center, Stride General Hospital, and so we're kind of hoping to have them come be part of our new site. And there's a demonstration kitchen, so we want them to lead some cooking demonstrations. They have a community garden that they can set up, and they also kind of like invite people kind of board a cultural therapy. So kind of really expanding how we're trying to serve people beyond just, you know, focusing on the medication treatment and focusing on the therapy, but really trying to engage people around various groups. We run about thirty-five to forty groups a week. A lot of these are really more rehab-oriented groups, some are facilitated by our clients, life skills groups, things that just they kind of felt were needed, that feedback we were getting through the Positive Visions, which is our client council. It's been with us for about ten years. You know, everything that we kind of want to get started or do, we kind of run through them, kind of get their input. Most of the people that attend that regularly are wows, they're wellness outreach workers, so they're really invested in kind of the direction of the program and what we're doing and what we're offering. I think we're really hoping that in the new site that we can get a chance to really bring the community into our center. I think we're looking to establish a partnership with NAMI Glendale. We've had an ongoing relationship with them. We've had a couple of staff members that have been leading a family support group for probably ten years now. They started running the Familia Familia, the Family Support Class, and that's something that we've talked with them about, expanding all of their services into our new site, because in the new site, we're going to have, you know, five group rooms, so we could really offer some simultaneous NAMI programming in the evenings. I think the others, we're looking to partner too in the new site, the Department of Health Services is going to co-locate with us, and I think that's going to give us a chance to address some of the primary health issues that our clients are experiencing and a chance to kind of build a partnership so that they can be seen in the same center, and then also kind of leverage some of their lifestyle programming, their diabetes classes that come even through the Royball Health Center, and see how we can kind of leverage that to offer more of an array of services, not just around the mental health, but just kind of overall wellbeing. The other partnerships that we've had too is with UCLA as well. I think there's an evidence-based practice called Individualized Placement and Supports, and it really is kind of an FSP level of intensity, but working around the issues of how people become employed or to get back to school. In our initial kind of referrals of fifty-seven people, about fifteen or so have either returned to work or have started to enroll in school. So, and that's probably over the past, say, six months or so. And that's a partnership we've been doing with UCLA, again, utilizing our occupational therapists to kind of help, kind of guide that service as well. We've had a clergy roundtable for about, I think, eight years, and that's kind of continuing on. We've been using that in a lot of partnerships, especially around issues of homelessness in the community. Church All Saints, a Episcopal church, in Highland Park opened a homeless shelter a few years ago, and we've been outreach to them during the winter shelter programming. But that's been a great experience. And then I think really, you know, the big focus that we've been doing is trying to incorporate art into recovery, and I think like that's really been a hallmark of our program. I think we've had two or three different art groups at a time. We've had a creative writing group that's been going on for several years. This art group and the art community in Northeast Los Angeles, in the Highland Park area, the art galleries are very plentiful, they have art walks regularly. We've had longstanding partnership with Future Studio Art Gallery, which is right next door to our Wellness Center, as well as Avenue Fifty Studio. Avenue Fifty Studio has hosted an art show for some of our clients to present that was curated by a former nurse of ours, and that was probably a couple of years ago. And then we've had ongoing with Future Studio where they allowed us to utilize their space during art walks so our clients can display and sell their art and their jewelry and different pieces. We've also been part of a Metro Art Project where they were taking submissions from our clients as well as from Franklin High School, and they selected some for a couple of bus stops in Highland Park. So that's kind of a way to beautify, you know, some of that and introduce art. The other is that our creative writing group, which we'll have some people invite them up right now to get a chance to kind of share a bit of their spoken word, but they've participated in Lit Fest Pasadena for the past two years. And most of the people that go to the Lit Fest, you know, you have an author, and they're kind of talking about their book or something, and people go to see them because, you know, they're a famous author. Really, for us, it's really been people kind of coming and sharing some of their stories, some of their recovery. And I think some of the people that have found their way into our sessions have been very moved by the comments they make afterwards about, you know, how different this was or how special it was to kind of hear that. So I want to get a chance to invite Jessie Cho up to introduce a couple of people too.
Hi, good morning. So I'm Jessie, and Cho, I'm a community worker in Northeast Mental Health. Today, I just wanted to share something about creative writing and the healing process. In 2011, a community worker asked a client to read her poem at Northeast, at a Northeast event. It was a short poem, and halfway through it, the client felt a familiar lump in her throat and wanted to shut down as she had always done. The community worker said, "Keep reading," and the client did so because she had learned to trust the community worker, even if what she heard was different from what family had always said. The client listened to family above all others, but now here were new viewpoints at Northeast. As she applied these lessons, she saw that they were meant to nurture and empower. She had known life as a sister and aunt, and most of all, a daughter, but she had not been encouraged to explore other facets of herself. Tears fell, the voice quivered, and the client kept reading. In pushing through the fear and guilt of expressing herself, her voice steadied. She was amazed when fear and loathing did not continue for as long as she spoke. People actually listened at the Wellness Center. They did not make faces or roll their eyes behind her back. She realized the peach pit lump had diminished and eventually disappeared. This client continues her recovery, stands before you today, able to express myself as a county employee. I came to DMH in March of 2016 after a rookie year at DHS. In August of 2017, the originator of Northeast's writing group, Stella Archrod, who was also the community worker who told me to keep reading, recommended me to facilitate this group. This group was my favorite source of support for socialization, outreach, productivity, and therapy. I looked forward to it each week. It made me aware of time, so that I began to keep a calendar again. The writing group helped me to rejoin society more productively than ever before. Meeting, uh, I'm sorry, Healing Can from Topics presented each week. Do you forgive yourself for anything? I had to forgive myself for not ordering white truffle shavings on my Costa sometime in the nineteen eighties. What came out in twenty minutes of writing was my not feeling good enough to order such an expensive delicacy and regretting it ever since. The group helped me to stop beating myself up over it. Such revelations were uncovered each, every week. I strive to continue the support I found in this group. The topics encourage creativity, which clients have expressed wanting to explore in their writing. For example, in a picture of a path in a forest, are you going in, coming out, or are you standing in the middle? Creativity in each client's work is powerful to listen to as each arrives at his or her own truth. Talent continues to stream through the Northeast facility. We explore venues to allow people to present art, writing, and crafts in their own communities among friends, family, and locals who are avid to uplift and support hopeful artists. It is a privilege for any of us to witness an individual's growth in art and writing groups. Ultimately, the most rewarding thing is to see individuals acknowledge and claim participation in their own healing process with newfound confidence and esteem. So two foreign participants in our writing group. One of them is Nathan Cambridge right here, and another guy is George Bernal. And George, I think you want to go next, right?
Hello, I'm George Bernal, a client and volunteer at the Northeast Wellness Center. I'm here to read a story I wrote from the writing group that I participated in. Here it is. It's called "Perseverance." "I persevere on the days when I prefer to be alone and not leave my room, but being isolated has not helped me in my life. So I leave my home and go to the Northeast Wellness Center. I walk to the Northeast Wellness Center to volunteer, be involved in support groups, and to relax. Walking and viewing my surroundings, aware of my feelings, have helped put my mind at ease. Support groups like Walking for Joy, Healing Through Art, Writing Your Life Stories, and others groups have been helpful for me in controlling my social isolation and anxiety. As a result, I'm participating regularly and have recently become a volunteer. Being a volunteer, a wellness outreach worker, and helping peers in their own healing has brought more purpose and meaning to my life. Learning from my peers, hearing their experiences, and in interacting, has given strength to my mental health. My journey of isolation and depression haven't been easy. Consequently, it has been a challenge, but it is possible to overcome with patience, faith, and perseverance. The backing and support that I have been receiving from my fellow peers and staff at the Northeast Wellness Center has helped me in my recovery. Thank you."
This is still new for George to kind of come out and speak in front of people, so it's really truly amazing, and he participated in Lit Fest Pasadena where he spoke in public for the very first time. So you're doing awesome. So, you're doing awesome.
Hi, I'm Nathan Cambridge. I'm also a client at the Northeast Wellness Center, as well as a member of the Writing Your Life Stories. I appreciate this opportunity to share with you. This is a short piece about kind of the start and continuation of my journey back into good mental health, which many people in this room have been part of, and I've really appreciated it. And now is the time where I make my standard joke of I need glasses, and I have to admit it, so. This piece is called A Step Forward. The first step towards healing for him was recognizing the wounds. The next step was no longer picking at the scabs. The next step was to disinfect. The next step was to stop looking to the source of wounds for comfort. The next step was to recognize that what comfort there was was only the familiarity of the pain, the ritual and the routine. For him, it was the equivalent of emotional cutting. Healing for him was recognizing the pain had never wanted to be more than itself, and he was its vessel. No matter how much snow was shoveled into the shopping cart, the path would not be cleared. He had to recognize the void he felt, the empty, was for something that didn't exist. He was saving a slot for the version of the pain he could see transforming into pleasure. This was an error. Humans heal. Humans who are toxic will be so, no matter what amount of sugar, i.e. his heart, that was added. Pain used him for his own devices. They had been thick as thieves. Healing was recognizing he was the only one being robbed of energy, of his soul, of his present. He was Charlie Brown, getting the football yanked away at the last moment, and then rationalizing it would work next time if he just ran a little faster. Healing for him is looking around and not looking into the crystal ball of wishful imagination or to the promises that were indeed false. He healed by dialing himself and not calling for the painful pride. I am him.
One thing I know, Stacy's really been supportive of us in the whole service area. We're still kind of in the beginning phases of trying to figure out how to do it and how to get it out. But I think our intention is for downtown Hollywood Northeast to really partner together and find a way to kind of help clients be able to receive some compensation for the art that they're creating. So we've had clients who've produced art, they've been in the Art Walk, Ruth Prado, Rita, Irma Baieho's over there. Handcrafted jewelry and painted cards, you know, hand painted drawings. I think our hope is to figure out how we can begin to sell these on tote bags, maybe on coffee mugs, different things. So kind of look out for the Creative Expressions Collective from Service Area 4. So we're going to try to get artists from all of the programs really getting a chance to start to create art and get a chance to sell it. The other thing, I think, you know, for partnerships for us, we've been with Northeast Consortium up in the Northeast Los Angeles area, partnering with El Centro del Pueblo and Children's Hospital Los Angeles, as well as with the Boya Heights Health Neighborhood. We've worked closely with Diego Rodriguez and Alma Family Services, and there's a lot of great things that Alma and the Boya Heights Health Neighborhood have been doing in the community, you know, attending the city parks. And we've been kind of trying to get to most of those events, do them pretty robustly and vigorously. So I think our effort, too, also the State Historic Park of Los Angeles, we've been conducting therapeutic Thursdays for the past year, kind of taking program, Mental Health Awareness Program in there each Thursday evening. So we're hoping to kind of continue to expand that and hopefully, you know, get all the other programs involved and kind of work together to kind of leverage all of our supports and resource. So thank you, Stacy, for all your support.
Thank you all. I can't tell you all how proud I am of my staff. They really work hard every day, and their staff works just as hard to bring quality services to the community, services that we would want for our own families, and we won't accept anything less. And I can't tell you how excited I am that Northeast building, we are literally days away, days away, from ribbon cutting. And they will have a facility that will mirror the wonderful things that they're doing there. So look for that, and we will also be looking to duplicate a lot of what they're doing there. They seem to have figured out the secret sauce, and we're going to be spreading it around the entire county, not only in four. So coming to a kiosk near you, peer enterprise. So right now, I'd like to introduce Dr. Jonathan Sharon, Director of the Department of Mental Health, to address the crowd.
Hey, everybody.
Hello.
Good morning. Really exciting for me to be able to, to come here and see such an incredible crowd and see, to feel the energy in this room. And, I mean, for me, this is, this is the real deal. This is about community engagement at a new level that we want to continue to grow. We need it. I need it. I'm here till 5:00 PM. You know, we're doing a lot of stuff at the department, I think, to try to elevate the importance of mental health, which I don't think many people are arguing about these days. But we no longer will accept, you know, being a field and a department that is anything but at the very top of the list in terms of our importance to, to our clients, to our communities, and frankly, to the well-being of this entire county. We, as many of you may have, may know, over the last two years, have done a, have done a We Rise event, and I hope that a lot of you managed to get to that. I think it really, I think it really kind of brings a bit of, a bit of focus, a bit of energy, a bit of hope, and certainly, community building in an effort to create connectedness around issues that affect every human being around the globe today and historically, it's part of the human condition. And that new culture, the new understanding is really, really critical. It's kind of the fuel that we will require in order to make the kind of sweeping changes that we're looking to achieve here in LA. I want to make a couple of comments about the stakeholder engagement process, and I believe that we're moving in a really great direction, which is why I'm so happy to be here. And that is, is move it towards your DMH. And I know that's a concept that many people understand. I know it's a concept that many people really support, but at the same time, I know it's a lot, it's a concept that many people don't understand. And I know it's a concept that many people don't really embrace because it feels foreign, it feels new, it's change. The idea is really to set up a system in LA County, which is a massive, massive jurisdiction that brings together all of our stakeholder processes in an organized and coordinated way to get access to new voices and all the voices that we need to engineer this department and our services. And there was a lot of work done for many, many years, and I think going back mostly to the MHSA program, which mandated a different level of community stakeholder engagement. And really, the work that's been done by the department and really departments across the state is great, but we're trying to take it to the next level. You know, really, really figuring out a way to embolden the SACS, the intercultural communities, coalitions, all stakeholder efforts, all stakeholder concerns and suggestions need to be brought into the department, and we need to try our best to be responsive. And then what I'll tell you, and I joke, I joke about having worked in the VA, which I did for a long time, and I, and I joke about how brutal that bureaucracy is and relentless in kind of shutting down any creativity. And when I came to LA County, I, you know, I used to make comparisons, you know, to the VA that we were like a Maserati, you know, as opposed to a Corolla. But I have to say, two and a half years in, I'm not so sure about the Maserati, you know, but somewhere in between. And the reason I bring that up is that partnership is not easy. It's not easy at the level of individual people. It's not easy at the level that, and complexity that we face. And there's a lot of good and bad and ugly as we move forward, and we know that, we recognize that. And I, I implore everybody, including our staff and every imaginable stakeholder participant, to be tolerant and to understand that it's gonna take a while, that we are actually in a new place. You know, we're starting to see hotspots of energy and excitement and, and input and engagement and trust and hope that I don't think we have before. They're new, and I wanted to see that catalyze. I want to see that crystallize and replicate around this county so that we can become a larger organism together. In fact, the biggest issues, in my opinion, that face our society are, are, are lack of adequate connectedness. The more connected we are as people, as neighbors, as communities, as a county, across the public and private sectors, between departments, the better we will be, the easier it will be for people who are suffering to be identified and for those people to get expedited to the services that care the opportunities that they need to thrive. So I ask you to stay vigilant, not asking for any free passes, but also to be tolerant. In terms of tolerance and vigilance, I do want to mention one person in the crowd that, as I'm thinking about all of this stuff, comes to mind, and I asked her for permission to mention her name, and that's Catherine Clay, who's sitting at this table. Many of you would know if you, if you go to the Peer Research Center that it's hard to get even close to that door without a very bright, shining light greeting you and welcoming you and helping you feel included and important. And I applaud Catherine for that. But I also want to let you know that when I first met Catherine in the context of the Men's Reintegration Center and a very tough, I think, my first SAC meeting, it didn't go so well. In fact, I was told very clearly that I got an F, that my grade was an F, and I had failed and that I was failing. And it took a little while until she gave me a D minus. And I told her then, and I'll say it again, that I'll take the D minus. I'll take the D minus because we have so far to go. And I want to get to the point where we can all say that together we get an A with distinction. But it's a long, long way, and I thank you, Catherine, for, you know, being such a strong advocate and being tolerant and being a part of the solution. So thank you. I'm gonna talk, I'm sorry, I'm gonna take a long time, a little bit of time here, Stacy. All right. Good. And this, this mic keeps dropping on me, which is fine. I can handle it. Got a little AV assist. Thank you, brother. You know, as I'm sitting here and learning about all these great programs in, in Service Area 4, I can't help but think about the millions of things on my mind and the many, many things that are in the, in the, in the works. And, you know, when I think about the Men's Reintegration Program, I'm asking myself, what's the relationship with the Men's Reintegration Program, with our Court Linkage Program, with the Jail Linkage Program? You know, how are we weaving together these different efforts, not even just within our department, but across departments, to have greater impact? Those are things that with real intention, we're going to be working towards, because I think, again, we have a long way to go there. I want to, I think about restorative care really as the pathway to restorative justice, which is something that this department is all in on. And I will say, for a variety of reasons, we're taking a bit of a different approach than predecessors around the populations that we prioritize and opening up everything we've got, including all of our research streams to go after the biggest problems in our communities and in our society. And I don't want to get into the whole issue of the jail, the jail replacement, but there's a lot of movement right now in the space. And the health departments, I think, are taking a real lead role in driving the policy. And I applaud the board for being willing and having the courage to really rethink where we're going in the interest of, of our people. I want to mention the, what I consider to be a kind of a, of a new approach to restorative care, which is not happening in Service Area 4, but in 6, and I believe will be the first of a number of programs, and that's the Behavioral Health Center on the Martin Luther King Jr. Campus in the Old Hospital, which brings together the Departments of Health, Public Health, Mental Health, WE DAX. We can just call that Workforce Development, Probation. The idea that we need to create a different level of access through a set of urgent care centers across the departments that will be providing acute and subacute care, will be providing open residential services for people that have mental health issues and addictions, will be bringing back intensive outpatient services, which are a dying art and are way, way under expressed in our field. And importantly, we'll be focusing on reintegration, recovery, personal recovery, and community reintegration. And we'll do that by having partnerships with probation and education, training, and employment opportunities for people who need them to have hope. The last thing about that building and this effort, which I see as a broader one, not just on that campus, but frankly, across the healthcare campuses of Los Angeles County, is the role of peers. We see peers playing a major role in that effort, in that program as concierge, as navigation in that building, on that campus, across Los Angeles County. And we want to offer those types of jobs for people who have skills, talents, that are based in their experience and go way beyond the issue of training as a clinician. Because these are about... These are about human needs. These are about human needs, not just clinical needs. And with that in mind, I'd want to mention that, you know, a big focus on, on the social determinants of health. And, you know, for those of you who've heard me talk before about the live, love, do. People need a place to live. They need people to love and support them, and they need something to do. One of our prior leaders, who's now in New York City, Mitch Katz, you know, is a big proponent of housing first. And I think that's consistent with what I'm saying. And it's one of the reasons why I'm so verbal and vocal and active in the peer space is because we need to recognize that people who, like George, who came up here and I think connected us all around his work and his story, are isolated. connected us all around his work and his story, are isolated. Isolation is a big, big problem, and it's a core issue when it comes to mental illness. And that by leveraging peers to create kinship, as Mitch would say, write a prescription for kin, that's a new day, that's a new era. And we need to do that, and we need to move a lot of our resource away from just treatment towards opportunity. Because if people have purpose in their life, it's gonna change their whole view on getting treatment and needing a place to stay so they can sleep and not wanting to or needing to rely upon drugs and alcohol to feel good. I'm getting there, Stacy, I promise. But you got me all jacked up. I mean, I come in here, obviously, with these great stories and with all these people. I want to let you know that there's an LPS audit that's ongoing in this state. I don't know how many of you are following that, but I'll tell you that LPS law, which was created about 50 years ago, for a lot of reasons, has kind of, I think, is becoming obsolete, is becoming very difficult for us to interpret in a systematic way and for us to implement in a thoughtful and caring way for people who are most vulnerable and cannot be engaged otherwise. And what was happening is as that was becoming more and more the narrative, and you've got all these legislators up in California, in Sacramento, lovely people in general, is that everyone's like, oh, well, I'm gonna create my bill, I'm gonna throw my bill at this problem. But here's the deal, it's not about a bill. And what we in Los Angeles County have done, with the help of other advocates, including Daryl Steinberg himself, have said, hey, let's take a step back and let's have the whole legislature look at this set of laws, see how they're working, see how they might be re-engineered for the future, you know, when we have an epidemic in our streets and frankly, in our jails. And then what's happening is we're not able to engage, we're allowing people who need treatment to not get that treatment, to spill into the streets and to get engaged by law enforcement and then get treatment in an incarcerated setting. So we are absent landlords the longer we continue to accept that. And through an audit, I mean, most people, most governmental agencies would not call an audit on themselves. And I have been called, you know, a number of things, and on this one, I would say as well. But the goal of the audit is to say, what's happening, how are we doing? Because we're not doing well, we want to understand why we're not doing well, and we want to change it. And we want to change it not just around mental illness, we want to look at addictions broadly and robustly, because we need to. The biggest thing about involuntary care that I will say, and I, you know, I mean, I'm telling you that I'm pretty calm right now, but when I get into this at the state, I'm not particularly calm about it. And that is, when you take decision-making power from a human being, and when you assign a surrogate decision-maker around that person getting care, you better well assign the resources that are needed for that person to recover. We're trying, we heard about it up here, to lead that charge by creating what I call, and it's a pilot, Conservatee FSP. So if you're conserved, we're gonna say, you got a dedicated FSP team that's available to you and to your guardian 24/7. I mean, we can have a guardian who doesn't know who to go to all day long. And we need to look at that systematically across this county and across this state. And it helps us make a very strong argument to the Department of Finance and our new forward-thinking, hopeful governor about the fact that it's gonna take resources, folks. And we have to have enough guardians as a government agency, as a department. And we have to support private conservators so that caseloads are not through the roof. We have to make sure not only that there's a dedicated FSP or FSP-like team 24/7, but that there are enough hospital beds, residential beds, and housing, living environments for people who are so sick that we have to give them a surrogate decision-maker. So when we make those arguments, we need to be heard and we need a response. We do have a lot of money in California, thanks to the MHSA, but it's not enough to do this broadly. And this is an argument that's being leveraged, again, with the state to move in that direction. The last thing I want to say really involves a lot of the work that I do in Sacramento. The first thing, and one which is dear to my heart and dear to, I think, to the hearts of this whole movement, is the Peer Support Services Bill, SB 10. SB 10 is moving. I was on a call for an hour this morning before I came here about how it's gonna be structured. And we're continuing to fight to make sure that it is pure to its intention, it recognizes the discipline, the specific functions that can be and must be played by those with lived experience and reimburse for that work, not as a favor, but because we're not gonna get there if we don't do it. The other is AB 1766, the Boarding Care, which I'm sorry to say, is getting what we call gutted. The idea there was to say, hey, the Boarding Care Network is disappearing before our eyes. We're losing more Boarding Care units than we're building new permanent supportive housing units. And I mean, it's not even close, and it's accelerating. And the reason is because it's a broken business model. You know, we have a lot of really lovely people who have been in this business for years and years, decades, holding up boarding cares as best they can with inadequate resources, and people are giving up. But we recognize that, and we're going after it, and the Board of Supervisors is going after it, we're leading that charge. And what we're hoping to figure out is how can we fix the business model? You know, people say, well, the boarding cares are dumps, you know, they don't have enough services. Well, that's because they don't have enough resource to be thriving environments. And we don't just want to rescue those that are failing and keep them kind of languishing, we want to improve the environments, we want to enrich the services, and we want to grow the network. Because for many people, boarding cares can be a long-term solution and can offer individuals a place to be where they belong and offer them an opportunity to do things and to have purpose of being in their lives. The very last thing I'll say is that all of this depends upon what I call payment reform. Every day, we have beautiful people in this county, including those who were up here before me, working hard to deliver care. But you deliver care, and we have a culture of delivering care based upon what you can bill for. And if you can only bill for what comes down in a medical model, in a medically driven system, you're not gonna deal with a tend-to support the human needs. The idea with payment reform, the idea with payment reform is to say to the governor, all the advocates, every auditor, every regulator, that we want to be audited, we want to help be held accountable to population outcomes. In other words, give us the resources, tell us what outcomes you want us to achieve, and let us, liberate us, let us do that. So I don't care about whether I have to deliver a certain code of clinical treatment to get the money if a person's saying, hey, I want to try to get a job, I need a place to live, I need to connect with other people socially. As a first step into the system and to make it, to compel their own personal motivation to get treatment, that will turn the system on its head, it will create systemic cultural change so that we can start addressing the needs in a way that feels welcoming, respectful, and co-produced by the people that we're trying to help. Thank you very, very much for this.
Thank you, Dr. Sharon. I just want to mention that we all love hearing from you, and you're welcome to all meetings, not just to town halls. I would love to see you anytime. Thank you.
Yes, Dr. Sharon, I'm gonna call you James Brown because you're the hardest working man in mental health. I don't know when you sleep.
He doesn't.
There you go. And I don't want to forget a recognition to Dr. Bonds here, please get him over. The book of work on Dr. Bonds' plate blew my mind when they announced what your new assignments on top of everything else you do. I don't know how, do you sleep? Okay, thank you both. I probably shouldn't say this, but I'm gonna say it anyway. I remember when you first came, Dr. Sharon, you laid out your vision in summary, and I remember the first time I heard you talked about the payment reform and all this. And you know what was, you know, people whispers and things, and people like, how can you possibly do that? You can't do it for this reason, you can't do it for that reason. And I'm like, I thought to myself, he's such a nice man, I'm gonna miss him. But I'm here to tell you, I am a believer now. And you have done some pretty miraculous things in the short time that you've been here. And, you know, I'm on the wagon and I'm ride or die, and I think, you know, from everyone I've ever heard from, they're right along with you, and we're really looking forward to the destination where we're going. And we're already off to a good start. If I can remind some of you that may have been around or remember the mental health system that we had many, many years ago, I first started with DNA in 1997. Anybody remember those days way back then? Okay. If you recall, back then, you'd go to a clinic and you'd get medication, would take you oh, maybe a few days to a couple of weeks or a month or so to get an appointment. Then after you came for the appointment, you'd get an intake, then you'd come back to see the doctor, and all of that would take several months. And God forbid, if you missed your appointment, then you'd get your medication, you'd get assigned to a therapist, you might see your therapist once a month, if you're lucky, twice a month, because the caseloads were so high. And if you were very lucky, you might get a group therapy. And if you were really, really, really lucky, it would actually be an appropriate group for you because they didn't have many. And that was just about it. And as a clinician, my background's nursing, but I've worked with a variety of clinicians, psychologists, and social workers, case managers. You couldn't tell one from the other because we were all doing the same thing. And it was pretty daunting, and I saw a lot of people, good people, exit the system. They weren't stimulated in their work, they weren't motivated. We cared about our clients and we wanted to do good work, but we didn't have the resources or the support to do it. But that wasn't necessarily because folks didn't want a support, it was just the system, the system was broken. Then fast forward to MHSA, and that turned a corner. And there was light at the end of the tunnel, and we've done some great work with MHSA, but there was more work to do. And then here comes Dr. Sharon to bring us home, and we appreciate you, please. And your vision has always been our vision, we just didn't know how to get there, and now we're on our way, and we thank you for that. I do want to recognize in the crowd, I also forgot my reading glasses today, Kathleen Ostrid from Mark Early Thomas's office, Erin Schneider from Sheila Kuehl's office, Fernando Morales from Sheila Kuehl's office. We thank our elected officials and their staff for being at the table. We need you, and we appreciate your support, so thank you for that. I also want to recognize Bill Tanner, where are you? Bill, Bill? Bill is the district chief for contracts for Service Area 4, so wanna put a face to a name.
Yes, Bill.
We have a provider for this bill, there it is, or folks looking for money for their organization. See, Bill? Okay. Did I, did I, anyone, you have representatives here, individuals? Okay, so moving on.
Yeah, if somebody could tell me what's next on this.
Katherine Clay.
Peer Resource Center. Katherine Clay. And I also thank Katherine for grabbing me on the sidewalk the other day because in that very moment, we came up with, though, her idea, a collaboration, and together we are going to be partnering with folks in the Peer Resource Center that wanted to participate in the outreach and engagement of the homeless around the department there. And they have knowledge that we don't have, they know the folks that are coming into the Peer Resource Center. So we're gonna partner to figure out how we can best leverage that information and your talent to get folks off the street and housed. So I thank you for that, and that's what, you know, Service Area 4 and the community and SAC and Peer Resource Center is all about. And I'm so happy that Peer Resource Center's in form, so proud.
I want to first thank the commission for inviting the Peer Resource Center to come and present. And on that note, Stacy, we troubleshooting on yesterday, and a member of the home team came and was able to assist four of our homeless that we had identified, get them in emergency shelters, even assist with applying with long-term supportive housing. So we think that it's absolutely gonna work, and we're ready to create our list for you. Another thing is, the SAC has begun to start meeting at the Peer Resource Center for, for the past two months, SAC 4 has been meeting at the Peer Resource Center. So we're thankful also for that new networking opportunity. We're also having the Faith-Based Council has officially started meeting at the Peer Resource Center. So we're excited that our facilities are now being utilized more, and Dr. Sharon is gonna be hosting on Monday, the first Monday of every month. He'll be meeting down there with his executive staff and also with staff members of the community that have called in to make appointments. He'll be meeting down at the Peer Center first Monday of every month. We have also recently partnered with the WISE Training Program. WISE has been training, doing peer advocacy, RAP 1, RAP 1, RAP 2. So we have a RAP trainees going on there. One of the things that I'm absolutely excited to talk about is there's gonna be a shift in management. And finally, we have some transparency. So one of the things that I really like to learn is new words to hold the department accountable. And so one of the things that I was talking about was where's the transparency? The old management don't want to talk to the new management, but we're affected by it because we are the line staff here. And so when they all came together, I said, this is what Dr. Sharon talks about, is transparency. So one of the things that I get to do at the Peer Resource Center is kind of hold everybody accountable. One of the things that I'm really excited to talk about was, we had a homeless woman that has been utilized in the Peer Center for the past two years, never wished engaging in mental health, she had been raped and abused and everything inside of her tent. We helped her reconnect with, helping her recall her voucher to get more time because she couldn't go out and look for an apartment in a homeless, dirty clothing. So one of the things that, even though we're not allowed to hold clothes at the Peer Resource Center, I began to keep my car trunk stacked with clothes, so every time... So every time she was going to see an apartment, I was able to give her clothes to show up I was told in June, everybody knows that there's no money in June until July comes around. So we had to work with this young lady to be able to figure out where was she now going to get some money from to even move into an apartment. So one of the things that I had to talk to her about was, you know, if you were applying for Department of Mental Health proposition, $63 would be able to help you move into this apartment. And so as I began to tell her the benefits of enrolling in mental health, she was now excited. So when we sent her over there to Hollywood Mental Health, Hollywood Mental Health kind of gave her the runaround. But we also called over there and said, but we know Jesus, so should we just call Jesus and talk to Jesus about this problem? Because he told us we could call him anytime. And so then there was, well, no, we'll, we'll work with her. She came back and they didn't work with her. But then one of the best opportunities that we get to have at the PRC is we're at the bottom of administration, where all the head honchos are at. And so one of the things that my lived experience with being homeless for 15 years was able to take me right down to Renee Turner and Maria Falk and say, how do we catch this woman before she falls in the gaps? This is July the 3rd, the holiday is tomorrow, property management's giving her until 3:00 to show up with some money, or else she's going to lose her voucher for the second time, and there won't be no housing available for her for maybe five years. So how do we now fix this gap? And so Renee Turner said, well, let me call and check all of the Ts and Is, and if everything is possible, then we'll send her a letter. Lassa's sitting in the Peer Resource Center, we're sitting in the Peer Resource Center, and I'm telling everybody, don't worry about it, I know this is going to work. Like, I know we don't have no guarantees, but one thing for sure is I'm here to talk about what services I lived through. But one of the things I know is DMH will help you get into an apartment. And showing up at 1:45, we got the call from Renee saying, the letter has been released to the property manager. Lassa began to cheer, the woman began to cheer and cry, and they said, Catherine, come go with us to get the kid. And I said, no, we have a party going on for the rest of the homeless community here, we're celebrating the 4th of July. I said, just take a picture and send it to me. So one of the things that the Peer Resource Center is able to do is just hold everybody accountable, and we have easy access to the administration upstairs. Sometimes I get a kind of, Catherine, you know, yeah, I know it won't never happen again, but one of the things that the people know is they can rely on Catherine to hold everybody accountable. And one thing Catherine knows is, when Dr. Sharon first came, and I told him, oh, you're getting an F, when Reba said, but it sounds so good, he'd get an A. Yeah, but I grade on a different curve of scale, and so he's getting an F until I see something different. One of the challenges, he said, is the only way to change the system is to join and be a part. I accepted the challenge to be a part. And one of the things that everyone can count on is I'm going to help for the peers that come behind me, I want the department to be able to support and for everybody to be healthy. So one of the things that I want everybody to know is just because you get a job, the illness doesn't leave. So I'm still currently and presently applying our women's reintegration, and I believe that that's the first step to all of us being able to know is what are our barriers? And we have to be healthy before we can go help anyone else. So I thank the department and I thank the commissions for allowing me to be here. And one set that I want everybody to know, from May of 19, I mean, of 2017 to July 19 of 2019, the Peer Resource Center has served 3,066 people, when yet still to come. And so we're moving and we're fighting and we're making progress, and now that the shift has to get to change with the transparency, the innovation is now rolling. So we're now trying to work with one of the department's newest hire, Anu. She's going to work with us on being able to develop and understand each and every one of our core gifts and how those core gifts pull together, just like the transform. So there's the yellow card, red card, green card, red card, but when you put them all together, they come this one big monster and able to tackle everything. So I'm happy to be working with you, Stacy, and I'm happy to be in Service Area Four, and together, we're going to make this dream come true, Dr. Sharon.
Would you go straight to the public?
Thank you.
That's okay.